Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Eastchester Board of Fire Commissioners. This is August 31st, and Commissioner Ingladon and Mr. Raven requested a special meeting a couple of days ago, so we're having the meeting. And I thank all the board members for being willing to make the meeting on such short notice, and we have a number of people in attendance. We have very few items on the agenda tonight, but I got a feeling we're going to be here for a while chatting. I'll knock off the parliamentary items or things that we need to get done. We have a set of minutes from a special meeting we had on August 8th, 2017. I have a copy of those minutes here. Basically, that was just a vote on folks who were thinking about hiring. And so, I'm looking for a motion to adopt those minutes. Can I get a motion to adopt these minutes? I'll make the motion to adopt them. Can I get a second?
Second, I guess, yeah.
I have one typo. Executive should have been with a spelt, misspelt.
You have full sets?
Yeah, there's probably two sets there. You've got more than one set, probably.
Kind of thick.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to adopt them. May I have a second?
I second it.
Baker? Mr. Laurie?
Aye.
Mr. Ingladon?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
No? Mr. Raven?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And just so we know, there was a lot of confrontation over these minutes. We had a vote in an executive session regarding three people who interviewed for a job. We just took a vote to see, to poll the board. I made the, offered the motion on each person, was seconded by Mr. Baker, and in each case, the motions did not carry. And so, if anybody wants a copy of those minutes, just foil us, or come up here, and there's your minutes. You can have a copy. The second thing we have is, we have a series of warrants. The town of Eastchester normally puts their tax changes through the tax rule. This year, there was a timing differential, so they ended up giving us, you know, 60 or 70 tax adjustments totaling about $12,000, more exactly, totaling $12,000. So, we're going to save Jamie Hangstrom from getting a million phone calls, which she's been getting from people looking for their checks. So, we have about, as I said, about 60 people here for a total of maybe more than 60, maybe 100, $12,265.51. Jamie would like to send checks out to all these people, and the average check is like $234, $17. You know, it's a various amount of checks. So, I'll look for a motion to make these payments.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's these warrants. That's the whole warrants for this evening. We also have tonight, one of the topics I want to bring up, and Mr. Ingladon has a topic he wants to bring up. I will bring up during the, excuse me?
Do you want to cover the firehouse first?
Oh, the firehouse, okay. The Chester Heights, do you want to cover that, or I'll cover it?
Go ahead, you've got the floor.
Okay. We've had some inquiry about the Chester Heights firehouse, and we're doing construction on the house where we're replacing the roof on it, and why we asked the fire inspector to take a look at the house to see if the house is occupiable right now, to be used as an area of public assembly on the second floor. It's commonly used for an area of public assembly for the volunteer firemen, and for the community uses it from time to time. We ran into a problem with the second floor doesn't have a second means of egress, and the first floor has raised plates to make the floor uneven, and so, there's a series of safety concerns with the building. The chief, after receiving the report from the, well, our engineer and the fire inspector believes that building should come offline until we finish our repairs, and the building will come back online for the public, but right now, it's, we should take it offline. Is that pretty much it, chief?
Yeah, his report was the second floor. The second egress is a rear stairwell that goes through the apparatus floor, and he says that doesn't meet the modern code because it goes through the garage area. So, because it doesn't have a second means of egress, he does not recommend that we use it for a place of public assembly at this time, the second floor. And then, the first floor, the plates are there, you know, that's...
Would it make a difference if the rig wasn't in the built, in the garage? Like, if we added something going on up there, and we had to just park out front for a three-hour period, would that allow us to use that space?
I would have to clarify with him, but I don't think it would matter that whether or not the rig is in or out. I think because it's an apparatus floor, I think that's why, because there's other vehicles in there as well. There's a generator truck in there, and, you know, as long with the fire engine.
But, we want to stress that we're not, we're doing this because of the condition it's in, and we're working on it, and we're not taking it offline forever and all that other stuff.
Correct. Yeah, it's just a matter of, right now, it's just not in a safe place for the public to be in there. So, that's why we're doing that. And now, we'll move on more to other topics.
Can I just, we're going to get into some of these other things. They may take a while to get through, and I'm wondering if it may make sense to allow the public to speak first, in case...
No, I think they should hear this, unless we give them two opportunities.
They're more than welcome to, yeah. Give them two opportunities, because if somebody doesn't want to stay, we don't want to keep them here.
Well, if anybody would like to speak now and not stay for the main show, and you're welcome to come up. And I'm sorry we kept you here as long as we have with our meeting timing tonight.
How you doing? My name is Raymond Inello. I live at 9 Central Drive. This is Dawn Atwood, and Elena Omahany, we're Chester Heights residents, and we're on the board of the Civic Association. We have a couple of concerns. Number one, right now, I guess it is offline for use, but going forward, what is, what are the options for public assembly on the second floor?
Good question. The options are, and anybody can lobby in here, the options are that, well, it's, that building needs to get, needs a new apparatus floor, and that's going to be our number-one priority, is to put an apparatus floor in that, in which it's, the cement slab that the fire engines sit on is being held up by 12-by-12 timbers underneath the building in a series of blocks. But, we're going to need to restore the second floor of the building. I believe, without question, without hesitation, that we need to put an elevator in and make the second floor accessible. I don't think you should have a building as a firehouse that's not accessible. There may be other board members who disagree with my train of thought on that, but my thought is that you need to make that second floor accessible, and we need to make the building, we need to put like, multiple-zone air conditioning systems in, and heating systems in, and put a commercial kitchen on the second floor, or some kind of food processing on the second floor, and make it a typical, kind of like what it is now, but a more than what it is now with an elevator and handicap bathrooms and all that kind of stuff. That would be my thinking, and my guess is the price tag to do that's going to be some multiples of millions of dollars, you know? But, that is, I think, where the department's going, or that's where I think we were going. Am I wrong with that, gentlemen?
Well, I think we're still figuring out what needs to be done, because there's some disagreements on some stuff, but the plan is, no matter what, to make it accessible and make it so that the public can use it like they have been. It's just right now, it's, it's not safe, and it's not right.
Yeah, we understand it's offline, and the concern of the residents are moving forward, that there was talk that it was not ever going to be used again as a public assembly, which we have...
We hear the rumors too, and in fact, Commissioner Raven brought that up in a meeting. I can tell you, speaking for myself, that wasn't anything I was involved, or I was proposing, and I don't think anybody on this board was actually proposing that.
Okay.
I will say this, though, just to manage your expectations. We, as per Brian's comments a few minutes ago about a secondary means of egress, those issues aren't going to be resolved until we do the interior of the building. We haven't even begun the design phase of that part of the project. And I think it's highly unlikely that that begins in earnest until, you know, either very late this fall, or early next spring, or potentially longer. And then, you have a period of time that we've got to put the project out for bid, wait for bids to come back, select a contractor, and I would imagine that work is probably going to take nine months to complete, once it started. So, you're probably going to be without use of that building for a year and a half.
Okay. I know you're working on the roof now. We have an association meeting scheduled in late September, and then also, the next thing is the election in November. Is it going to, are we going to be able to have access after the roof is completed? And then, I know there's going to be a time before the big project starts.
The second floor, no. Potentially, I think the voting's done on the apparatus floor. So, potentially, on that, I guess we'll say we have to get back to you, but anything that takes place upstairs, we won't be able to use.
For the next year and a half?
Yes.
So, once the roof is done, it sounds like, even though the next project is not moving on, it's still going to be closed.
After the roof is done, we're going to work on completing the balance of the exterior work, the facades on the building, and that work has been designed. It needs to be put out for bid. It's unlikely we'll be able to start that work until the spring, just because a lot of that is masonry work, which you just can't do in the colder weather, and given where we are right now, time-wise, it's highly unlikely we would be able to get it done before the winter comes.
I was just wondering if there's a window of opportunity where we could continue to have our meetings after the roofing before the next...
I think the answer's no.
No, okay, just clarifying.
But, if you need an alternative location, I will help you find one. That's not a problem.
Because we also have a Halloween, you know, we have some things on the schedule.
I'll talk to you after the meeting, or you have, you can email me. I will help you find an alternate...
Thank you very much.
...location somewhere in town that's accessible and appropriate. That's no problem.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and thank you, I'm sorry for the 45-minute delay.
Oh, no, that's okay. So, you're not discussing the firehouse the rest of the evening, is that, was that the message?
Yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, that's it on the, on those items.
Anybody else want to speak?
Yes, anybody else want to speak right now? Okay, so, one of the issues I want to bring up is updating the fire district code of ethics. And the reason why I want to update the fire district code of ethics is since April, I've been dealing with an issue I really don't want to deal with, and I didn't, and it really, to me, it's uncomfortable and not pleasant. We have an opening for secretary to the Board of Fire Commissioners in the Fire Department. We have a board member who has a sister-in-law that he would like to have that position, or lobbied strong to be in that position, that she should be in that position. So, it's, to me, it's uncomfortable when we have a board member pushing and pushing and pushing to, to have a relative in the position that he is trying to hire for, at the same time interviewing other candidates and critiquing other candidates. In this particular case, we could not reach that board member who lives out of town until we disqualified all the in-town board members. Subsequently, we kept looking all summer, and looking, and looking. At the August 8th meeting, I've gotten tired of spending numerous hours, endless amount of hours, dealing with this issue about filling a slot that's a roughly $30-an-hour-a-week job, 17 hours a week. I have probably spent 30, 40 hours going back and forth dealing with this job, which is a critically important job for the Fire Department, but in the scheme of things, we're not talking about hiring the next, you know, president of Walmart or something. This is administrative job in a fire district. But, I think everybody should be treated fairly, all the candidates that come to us, and I think they should know that the person who's critiquing them may have other motives. And that's what we are, and that's what we are, and that's why, in my view, this position hasn't been filled, that's why this position hasn't been filled since roughly April, when the position opened up, and this is now, tomorrow will be September. And our current treasurer is, works 17 hours a week and has her hands full. Our chief has his hands full, and this job has a lot of stuff. We haven't done our minutes, our monthly minutes haven't been done since March, our board minutes. I used to do the board minutes and give them to the treasurer to edit, and then get them back. Mr. Laurie complained that I shouldn't be doing board minutes, it should be the secretary, so we were moving them to the secretary over time.
I complained that before I even got on the board, Mr. Commissioner Winter.
Correct.
So, don't start that I did this now.
No.
I complained to you before I got on the board.
Okay.
And let's stop with this issue, bringing this garbage out. That the man, the man's sister-in-law withdrew her name before it even reached the board. Now, tell the public the truth.
I'm helping...
Stop saying what you want to say, and start saying the truth. That application of that sister-in-law of what you're talking about was pulled before it was even interviewed.
No, it wasn't.
Yes, it was.
That's not the case. She was in...
Dennis.
Wait a second. She was interviewed by the treasurer on July 1st.
And it was pulled because you started with the nepotism bit.
No, it was...
Now, let's not go with nepotism, because, you know what? We could go on and on and on, and we could hurt a lot of people with nepotism, okay? Well, let's not even go to the firemen, or let's not even go to the volunteers, or let's not go to the secretary. Let's knock it off.
I just want to say a few things.
I have the floor, and I'd like to finish what I'm saying.
Okay, I'd finish.
And you're welcome to have your comments. So, basically, we've interviewed candidates. We invited four candidates in to be interviewed by the board. I've interviewed, I've had a Wall Street career for over 30 years, I'm retired now, but I've ran a pretty successful business for a number of years. I've interviewed tons of people. I've been on this fire board 10 years. I think we treated people in the past when they came interview in a professional manner. I don't think we've treated anyone in a professional manner in the last six, four months in this job process.
And the volunteers treated you very well also.
And I think...
And you begged that...
I have the floor.
I know you do, but I am interjecting because I don't like what a lot of things are said. The volunteers put you where you are today, on your first tour. You come knocking on the Tucko Ho's Company's door three times, begging to get on this board, and the Tucko Ho's Company with all its volunteers backed you up and got you here. Now, don't start saying that where you were for 30 years and all that. The volunteers put you there, and now you're stabbing them in the back, and you're talking against us all the time. So, don't start, Dennis. Say the truth. You're aggravating me as well, and I'm sorry I had to interrupt you.
Okay, now, let me go on here. So, basically, we have on this board, is we have, we're trying to fill what I consider to be an administrative position. We try to people, treat people fairly. We have a candidate, we have a, we have a candidate for the position who lives out of district, or had a candidate that lived out of district, and what I'd like people to do, if they don't believe what I'm saying, or they're saying, hey, I'm making it up, foil the fire district for all the emails that had been exchanged between the board members, and read them for yourself. Most of them were exchanged between ourselves, and they were, they CC'd counts but never asked a question, and never responded to a question. So, all these emails are foilable. I would invite everyone in town, if they don't believe me, if you're a news reporter, you're a journalist, or anything, you have public interest, if you're a candidate, foil the emails. Read them. You can see if I'm some kind of lunatic, or just someone who believes in good public policy. I happen to believe in good public policy. Now, this has gotten to the point, and you have to look at the structure of the board. We have five board members. Mr. Laurie, who's so excited about this right now, will mention the volunteers at every moment. The volunteers are the same people who have been defying a court order, the VOA...
Dennis, why don't you stop with the court order?
Hold on, I have the floor, I will finish.
You have the floor, but the conversation was the code of ethics, the secretary position. If you're done with that, let's finish with that.
I'm not done with that. This is all the same conversation. Because this is why it's the same...
Mr. Laurie always has a problem. You have a problem with us all the time.
This is why it's the same conversation, and I'm going to bring up the conversation. The conversation's the same, is because you have two board members, you have three board members make a majority on this board, okay? Three make a majority.
You used to do that too. You did it your way when you wanted to sway everything.
I'm just going to yell and talk over each other, and I can do this all night too.
Yeah, me too, Commissioner Baker, but when he, when he swayed the board his way, it was okay.
But, I'll sway, I'm just giving you a reasonable conversation. I'm trying not to raise my voice, I'm talking reasonably. Now, what you have is you have Mr. Laurie here, who, whose sole purpose on this board appears to be the volunteers, and the volunteers right now have a court order issued by Judge Blackwood to produce documents. They have failed to comply with that court order since March 17th. That's a fact. They've gone to the appellate division to stay that court order, and the appellate division has turned them down. They have not gone to the appellate division on the, for the volunteer association. They went for, they went for the benevolent, and they got turned down, and the VOA, and the VOA they'd never even applied for. So, you have a discontented Mr. Laurie, who would love to see our law firm go away, because they're, they're bringing an action against the volunteers. You have another commissioner on this board who works for the town of Eastchester, who is suing the Eastchester Fire District for roughly $400,000 over hydrants. And that lawsuit...
I am not suing the Fire District.
No, you're not. Your employer is.
Well, you're suing the...
Okay, your employer's suing the Fire District.
There you go.
Right. So, now, you bring in the commissioner who would like to get his sister-in-law hired, and who is very, who is supporting that commissioner full blast, and so, the email chains lay it out. So, what I'm saying is, I would like to see the code of ethics to get improved. I don't want to have to deal with somebody trying to hire their sister-in-law. I don't want to have to interview people, and when I'm interviewing them, they start, and I'm interviewing, knowing that the person asking the questions, if they shoot them down, it is one closer to the sister-in-law. I think it's wrong. So, I just would like it to see us, and I'm not going to say what lines we need to improve, but I would like the code of ethics proved to expand family members. The other thing I would like...
Do you think though, that she's a sister-in-law, or that she's a non-resident?
They, well, the only reason, if she was a resident, we could have hired her really quick, but we had to go through the residents before we could hire her.
But, our previous secretary was a non-resident.
The previous secretary was a, right, we can go into that in a minute.
No.
We'll go into it now.
It was a non-resident.
It was a non-resident. Correct.
From Maranick.
From Maranick, yes.
So, she was hired by this board prior to my election, being a non-resident.
No, she was hired by Dennis.
No, correct.
Under false pretenses.
She was hired by Dennis.
Wanted straight, because I wasn't...
Without the board, without the board knowing it, she was hired by Dennis.
She was hired as an administrative clerk, not as a secretary.
By who?
She was not covered when she was hired under Section 174.
Who hired her?
The board, including Mr. Ingladon, including Mr. Baker.
Because you misled the board...
Oh, yeah.
...on the terms of whether or not a resident, whether or not someone who was out of town could be hired for the position. You told the board there was a distinction between secretary to the Board of Fire Commissioners and fire district secretary.
She was hired as...
With the latter, okay, with, excuse me, the former, being that the person basically did not have to live in town. And that's what you told us, is fact. And that's what got Anthony Laurie's vote, that's what got my vote, Dennis. And that's how you got her in, by deceiving your fellow board members.
No, she was hired as...
That's a fact.
Go to the Suffolk, go to Westchester County and look up her civil service. You know as well as I do, she was hired as an administrative clerk, not as secretary.
Dennis, I'm talking about when she was hired as secretary to the Board of Fire Commissioners.
She was...
You individually called civil service and told them that she was going to be promoted to secretary of Board of Fire Commissioners seven months before we appointed her. And the only reason why you got our votes to hire her is because you lied to us.
No, that's not the case.
Okay? That's exactly what happened. So, you're talking about code of ethics. Dennis, you have to live by the code of ethics yourself. You're the one who's the problem here.
No, read the, go to the May minutes.
Okay, when are you going to surrender the floor? Because I have some things I want to say.
I'm going to respond to your comment. If you look at the May minutes, May 2015 minutes, you will see, you voted to appoint Mary Lou Falcone as secretary to the Board of Fire Commissioners, subject to Civil Service Department approving it in May 2015.
But, she was already working here.
But, she was already working here, and why did we have to do that? We hired her as a different title.
Dennis, you misled the board.
No, I didn't.
You misled us, and that's what got my vote.
No, we didn't.
And otherwise, why would we have voted for somebody who lived out of town if it was a violation of town law?
You voted for her in May 15, 2015.
Because you misled, because you misled me.
No.
You misled Anthony, you misled Baker, you misled Jerry Napolitano.
No.
But, okay, so now, I'd like to speak.
Well, no, I'm not finished yet. When we hired Mary Lou Falcone as fire district, as administrative typist in two, in May of 2013, John Mollizari was your treasurer and secretary, two titles. That person did not need to live in town. John Mollizari in May 2015 was dying of cancer. We know that, he was dying of cancer. He died in November 2015.
Let him rest in peace.
Mary Lou Falcone was the person working in the office when John Mollizari was getting blood transfusions. And the county came to us and said, Mary Lou's title is being eradicated, we're going to change, we need to change her title. We gave her the title as secretary to the Board of Fire Commissioners, May 2015, John died in November. She was the only person working in the office.
There were two other titles available to the fire district, administrative assistant, and I can't recall what the name of the other title was, but you chose to bestow on her secretary to the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Now, the board bestowed it.
Again, she lived, no, because you told the board, you told me, you told the entire board, that Mary Lou did not have to live in town, because she was being hired as secretary to the Board of Fire Commissioners, not fire district secretary. Turns out, you made it up to get her in.
No.
So, you got our vote, and she got in there. And then, after you bestowed raises on her that equaled 50% of her initial salary, you demanded, screamed and yelled that the board give her health care, a $15,000 a year benefit, despite the fact that she was a part-time employee, and she was hired with the understanding that health care was not part of her compensation package. And everything goes back to that day, because the board decided we weren't going to give her health care. And then, after she walked out the door, quit, left us high and dry because she didn't get the health care, which she certainly didn't deserve, you dragged your feet for months before you were willing to interview other candidates for the secretary position because you kept on trying to hire her back. You called him up at home, you called me up at home, you called everybody. We need to hire Mary Lou back. I said, Dennis, let's move on, we'll find other candidates. As far as my sister-in-law goes, Dennis, I completely complied with the code of ethics. I made it clear upfront that she was my sister-in-law, I said I would recuse myself if she ever came up for a vote. I told you in writing that she would only, I would only support her hiring, even though I couldn't vote, if she was the most qualified candidate. And then, when you raised the issue about the town law, Dennis, I said to her what the problem was, and she, she said, I no longer want to be considered. That was in the middle of July. So, stop with the nonsense, okay, because it's just not true. I didn't only abide by and follow our own code of ethics, I followed the more stringent New York State Fire District model code, okay? So, that's a fact, and if you want to strengthen ours, even if we strengthen it to that code, I would still meet it. But, now, I also want to say something else, because this is important, because you've really, you've pushed my buttons here, all right? I want to make a general statement about the chairman's proposals to make some changes to the district's code of ethics. At first look, anyone might think this chairman, that this is the chairman being diligent in trying to protect the interests of the members of this community by eliminating any self-dealing by commissioners. However, while I would generally applaud such an effort, I do not believe that is what is going on here. Instead, I think that it is the chairman has proposed a revision of the district's code of ethics so that he could use our public session to smear certain commissioners, including me. He's smeared the three of us, so far. The chairman is looking for an opportunity to publicly accuse others of self-dealing under the guise of revising the code of ethics. He knows that the accusations serve to undermine people's confidence, even when those accusations have no basis in reality, which yours do not. When Dennis recruited me to run for election to the Board of Fire Commissioners, he told me story after story of malfeasance and self-dealing by former commissioners, firefighters, and volunteers. I was led to believe the department was a mess. I've come to understand, since I've been elected to the board and since I've gotten to know Dennis better, that most of those stories were a reflection of Dennis's view of the world rather than reality. Dennis sees malfeasance and self-dealing everywhere he looks. He believes most of our local government officials are corrupt, and he is always looking to somehow catch people. I don't believe this attitude is realistic, and it is very destructive and unhelpful to our board. Over the last few months particularly, Dennis has caused us to waste a lot of time. It is my firm belief that the majority of the commissioners on this board make every effort to work for the benefit of the people of Eastchester and not in their own self-interest. I also want to assure the public that there are four commissioners on this board who do not waste their time or their energies on spiteful personal agendas. We are serious about the important tasks at hand for this district, and we will continue to work hard to accomplish those tasks. What you've said here tonight, Dennis, is just a load of bull. And everybody who reads those minutes, I hope they take you up on it because they're going to see that everything was done above board, and what's happened here is you have caused the problems. Because you are a spiteful person.
Yeah. We had, everything here has been run smoothly for years. We had a treasurer who didn't bill people for about 15 years for their health care.
There we go.
We did. We're still going after those commissioners. We had a former chief who went out on disability. The board never approved that payment to him. That's about a million bucks. We had a, we had a, the guy who had our insurance for years. When he got the insurance, he was indicted by the U.S. Attorney for health, for insurance fraud. He went to prison for a year.
Dennis, you were on the board during all this.
And we voted against it.
None of us were. You were on the board. You were on the board. You presided over this.
And I hoped, hopefully, that's when I got the controller to come in. We had a former-
Control? What control do you have?
We had a former lawyer who was put through the retirement system as a full-time employee for 15 years, right? He wasn't. We had endless amount-
And you were on the board at that time, too?
No, I was not.
Yes, you were.
I was not. He retired in 1996. I was not on the board, okay?
Dennis, now you're litigating things that happened well before any of us got here.
He sued us.
For what reason?
He sued us.
For what purpose?
He sued us. That man sued us just three months ago. The guy sued us, all personally. It's not old news, it's new news, okay? We have not lost a case since I've been on this board. We have not lost a case. We're right now prosecuting a case against the volunteers, who I believe have $2 million more than they tell us they have. They're sitting on $4 million, and they're not even telling anybody, okay? I mean, let's face it, this place was utterly corrupt, and it's less corrupt today.
Malfeasance everywhere.
And I think-
Everyone's corrupt. Dennis, you find corruption even when it's not there. That's the problem.
I-
Sometimes you do find it, and it is there, but the vast majority of times, you're just making stuff up, which is exactly what's going on with this code of ethics and challenging the integrity of several members of this board.
I just-
And it's going to be out there. People, you're right. That's, I'm absolutely thrilled that you've invited people.
Mr. Inkledon, I would not have a problem if your sister-in-law wanted a job here, and you said, "Here's my sister-in-law's resume," which you did, and then not bothered to interview all the people, and made a public statement in the beginning, "My sister-in-law is running for the position. I will not interview any of these people." There's a woman sitting in this room that was interviewed. When she was interviewed, she did not know you might have other motives when you're interviewing her.
Dennis, I recused myself. I let the board know that if her hiring came to a vote, I am one person on a board of five. It takes three people to hire someone. I'm one vote, okay? I said I was going to recuse myself. Not only that, Dennis, let's go a step further here. You urged me to call my sister-in-law and have her come in and interview for the position.
That was before I realized we couldn't, well, I'll tell you what.
Did you, what was that? So now you're upset that I had her come in and interview when you urged me to do it? And when I was completely following our code of ethics?
Actually, we weren't urged to do it.
Yes?
No.
Dennis, people were there, they heard, come on. So what are you doing? You're like, you're saying now that it was unethical, but you were the one who wanted to do it?
So what these board, three board members want to do, I'll explain what's going to happen next. What happens next is Commissioner Inkledon is going to recommend that the commissioners don't talk to the lawyers.
Wait, hold on a second.
Only, only one person, only one person will communicate-
Wait a minute, Dennis, you're jumping from one story to another story.
Only one person will be allowed, only one commissioner is going to be allowed to communicate with the lawyers. And we'll anoint Commissioner Inkledon, or Mr. Raven, let's make it Mr. Laurie, to be the guy who's going to go, who's going to be the point person-
If you do that, you'll never call if I'm pointed.
For the lawyers.
You'll never call.
They are going to be the point people.
Dennis, it is, we'll get to the motion and the reasons for it, but you want to do it now? But I could explain exactly why this is happening. But the bottom line is, is we're not restricting anyone's, you know, access to counsel except intra-meeting. Every, every month, we have a meeting, we get counsel on the line, executive session. Everyone is free to kind of ask the questions that they want to ask. Also, you know, you're more than willing to talk to the person, the point of contact person, who will relay the questions on to an attorney. So we're not, all we're doing is trying to reduce waste and reduce someone who may have bad motives, someone who may be working under a personal agenda and wasting district resources by asking attorneys questions for no other reason than to follow a personal agenda. So there's multiple reasons for doing it, but that's one. And personally, I feel you've done that. And listen, we've spoken to the attorneys. They say many of the fire districts that they serve have this very, you know, these guidelines in place, and they follow them. I think they make sense. They will save the district money. You will still have access to, who knows if it's going to pass? I don't even know. But why don't we, why don't we discuss it and see how it goes?
I think it's got pretty good odds of a three to two.
Because of, because of your behavior, I think it does.
I think that we have to be steadfast in obtaining or going in the order in which we've started speaking about things. It seems to be jumping around. It doesn't seem to be quite good government to do that. I would say that we should have a motion first as to whether or not to at least table these code of ethics concerns that have been raised, because I haven't seen them in actual fixed form. I would be a disservice to just vote on something that's jotted down randomly. I haven't seen the actual language. I don't know if that language is going to be passed on to our attorneys to make sure-
No, 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 we're saying we're starting a discussion. We're not doing anything tonight on code of ethics. I would like to start a discussion, and I will be welcome to bring it up at every meeting.
But it doesn't sound like a discussion. It sounds like it's a speech, like a, "This is what's going on" kind of thing. It doesn't sound like a discussion.
No. Look at the agenda that was emailed out. I'm saying it's a starting discussion.
What's going to me as a town employee is being some kind of conflict. I think anyone here is going to say, as far as level heads are concerned, you're going to want someone like me, who's, you know, fighting for the people and being here and has a right to talk about things. I have no problem doing what's right for the people, but I have a problem with this. This entire engagement, I think, is inappropriate, and it's disrespectful to our people. They're here for, thankfully, they're here to hear government at work and make, see policy go forward, and not this back and forth. This is just probably the reason why I got elected. So I apologize for this.
Okay. So you can vote yes in a minute.
I don't understand, and first of all, second of all, I would just be careful about the way you address other people while you're up here. It is completely inappropriate, especially to me, because I am the one who has not said a word yet negative about anything. I'm just listening. Do not be wise with me. We should be working together, not trying to make these divisions. That's all I'm going to say about that.
Right. Peter, why don't you do your motion?
Sure.
So we're done with our discussion for ethics for the night? Or are we going back to that? Because if we're going to go back to it, I'd rather we just get that out.
My only offer, my only offer was, here's the code of ethics. I passed it out for people to preview.
For the record, the maj- 29, 2000.
Well, actually, you had a number of things in the code of ethics. You had broader disclosure, related parties, restrict commissioner, you had multiple things.
There's one more that is actually very critical, and thank you for bringing it up, Stuart. I'll bring it up, and I'll tell you that. This is a good point, and thank you, Peter, for bringing that up. Here's the point. We recently voted at the last meeting that a commissioner can join NISHIP for, and pay the full freight. So if a commissioner wants to get NISHIP health care, they can do it and pay the full freight. Now, it's getting less appealing month by month because we're up to another 9% increase next year for NISHIP. So that's going to cost us $25,000 or something for it. But I think if a commissioner votes on NISHIP and decides to get NISHIP himself, he should be precluded from negotiating the collective bargaining agreement. Because in the collective bargaining agreement, it's required that we have NISHIP. So-
Or something compatible, equal to or better.
Right.
Not NISHIP only, equal to or better.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a relative kind of question. So I think if you're going to get the NISHIP insurance, you just forego your ability to negotiate the CBA because you're negotiating something that's in your contract, that the union needs. And so you could have an opinion, you could have a different opinion than maybe that you would not if you didn't have the insurance. So I thought that, we can bring that, no, I'm not deciding that.
Explain the conflict, Miss, and I'm really sure, like, if a commissioner chooses to take NISHIP, he pays the full cost, which is set by NISHIP. Any decision that I make in negotiating with the union could only impact the union and their cost of NISHIP. If I vote to have the union pay less of their health care or more of their health care, that impacts the union. But NISHIP sets the premium, and I pay the full freight. So exactly how is that a conflict?
It is a conflict, and here's why. And this is why, this is sometimes how people don't understand conflicts completely. Let's just say, and the union wouldn't agree with this maybe, you say, "Okay, we're not going to, we're going to say, we don't want any health insurance in the contract. It's not going to happen, but we would never have health insurance in the contract." Well, you may, as a commissioner, may not want that because you need it in there because you're getting that health insurance, you're paying for it. And if it wasn't in the contract, you couldn't get the health insurance. So, or the board agrees to get some much lesser health insurance, and therefore you push to get a big concession on health insurance. What carrier are you using? And you might say, "I don't want to use that carrier, it's a lousy carrier. I want them to keep the NISHIP." And so you might be lobbying for them to keep the NISHIP when really you should be using a different carrier. And so there's where the conflict comes in. You can say, "Well, I'm an adult, I wouldn't do that. I would just know that's a conflict, and I would step out." But that's not how it should be. It's very simple. If you're, if you have the NISHIP insurance, you should step away from the CBA because NISHIP is spelled out in the CBA.
Well, I would clarify it, not just NISHIP, but it should be any benefit that the union has. You know what I'm saying?
Right. Any benefit in the CBA that you can access as a commissioner, you should remove yourself from the CBA. That would be a good way of doing it. So that's just, I'm offering that out there because this came up last month, and this is something we should think about since we allowed commissioners to do that. Now, I abstained last month because I thought maybe someday I could apply for NISHIP, and therefore I would abstain because it could affect me. But that's me. But, and then if I did sign up for NISHIP, I would never negotiate a CBA. That's me. So, okay. So that's all I have for the code of ethics tonight, and I'm sure you're going to go to the resolution now.
Yes. I am proposing that we create a point person to interact with and ask questions of legal counsel. I am making this proposal for a number of reasons. First, to control our legal costs, and I do not believe that it serves the district for every thought or idea to be run by counsel. The vast majority of issues that the board members want to discuss with counsel could wait until the board meeting, where it can be presented to the board, and a vote can be taken as to whether or not to ask counsel and incur costs. Second, central point of contact would create less confusion and duplication of efforts, multiple commissioners asking the same questions. Third, there has been some concern expressed by me and others on the board that on occasion some board members have utilized counsel resources and costs to pursue a personal agenda that does not benefit the Fire District. I have asked our counsel about such an arrangement, and they have told me that many districts set up such a point person. They advised us on how other districts structure this, and I will propose we follow that procedure. Therefore, I will make the following motion. Motion to set forth procedures for Fire District's interaction with legal counsel. One, the board shall appoint one member of the board who shall be the point of contact with legal counsel. Which member shall be the only person with authority to contact legal counsel? Two, other board members may email or write to point of contact with legal questions. All emails or written communications shall be copied to the entire Board of Fire Commissioners. Three, with prior approval from the point of contact or from the Board of Fire Commissioners, the entire group, other board members may contact legal counsel directly. If someone other than the point of contact reaches out to legal counsel, legal counsel is directed to email the entire Board of Fire Commissioners about the contact. And five, the Board of Fire Commissioners may change its procedure and/or point of contact by motion at any time, and/or if necessary, may designate a temporary or second point person as contact, especially if the original point of contact is unable to proceed, i.e. illness, vacation, conflict of interest, et cetera. I would make a motion to pass.
You can't use "at any time." Are you talking between meetings or only at meetings?
I'm talking in between meetings. When we have a meeting and counsel is on the phone, we'll all be there, and we'll all be able to speak.
That's not what it says. It says, "At any time."
That's what it says. This is what, it says what was written, and that's what we're looking to pass.
But you just said it says you can, you can change the point person at any time. So therefore, if you send out an email and three board members respond to change the contact, can you change it? You're not at a board meeting. You can't legally. A Fire Commissioner has no power to make a decision outside a board meeting.
So then we will change this to "at" the regularly scheduled-
Scheduled board meetings.
-board meeting. Thank you.
Now, there's a reason why in the last-
I make that motion. Do I get a second?
Discussion, oh, for discussion? No, usually you make a motion, and you ask for a discussion.
Okay, discussion.
In the last five years or so, since I've been chairman, and probably before I've been some chairman, I've been pretty much the point contact for all legal matters. And we've prevailed on everything we've ever prevailed on. And there hasn't been any problem with this, except for when Mr. Inkledon's sister-in-law needed a job here.
Again.
So that's what we're at. And my suspicion is, another, in another six months, we're going to hear about the sister-in-law showing up, is my suspicion again, looking for a job somewhere else in an administrative role. And to me, it's unfortunate. We've gone down this road, and I hear about a personal agenda, my personal agenda. To be very clear, my only personal agenda is to look out for the taxpayers. It has been that from day one. I have never benefited this department, has cost me, I don't know how much time and effort and materials I've supplied to the department. So I take offense when I hear it's my personal agenda. The only thing I've looked out for when I'm on this board is to treat people fairly and to pay care of the taxpayers. At times, the union has found me to be somewhat difficult to deal with, but at the end of the day, they get a fair shake. Their employees, from time to time, have problems. At the end of the day, they get a fair shake. I've always treated people fairly, and I've communicated with the lawyers fairly. We've only had this problem arise when we couldn't hire the sister-in-law. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Okay.
I'm sick and tired of you keep bringing that up and up. Suppose I got a sister-in-law. You're going to do that to me, too?
Well, you told me you had a relative that would make a perfect maintenance guy.
Maintenance man, but I would not bring it in, because you would do the same thing to me as you're doing to Peter. Okay? Didn't I say that to you?
That's what you said.
And I says, I would not bring my relative in here for a maintenance position, because you would nail me the same way you're nailing Commissioner Inkledon. And I think that's a shame, what you do with that.
You recuse yourself, and that'd be great.
You can stand up here and say that everybody thinks that you're a fair dealer, and, you know, you're liked, and this, that, and the other thing. The reality is very different, though. And, you know, I don't think that is the perception of how you conduct business on this board. It's not. And so, you know, anyway, the motion was made.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Vote.
I'll take a roll call.
Okay.
Mr. Laurie?
Aye.
Mr. Raven?
Yes.
Mr. Inkledon?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
I don't believe it's enforceable, and the other departments may do it, so I'm voting no.
And I agree with Mr. Baker. I don't think it's forcible, and I'll write the Attorney General to find out. I vote no.
Okay.
So that's three to two.
Now, we need to, a motion to appoint one of us as the point of contact.
Make a motion to make Commissioner Inkledon the contact.
Is there a second on that? I'd make a motion that I appoint Mr. Laurie as the point of contact.
I'll second Anthony's motion.
I...
Would you make?
I'll second yours.
He's going to second mine.
Well, we got to vote on the first motion first. I made the motion to appoint Commissioner Inkledon, so you got to vote on that motion first.
Go ahead, call the roll call.
Who's the second on that? You hear the second on that?
No, it was, he seconded it.
It's time for a vote. It's not a second.
No, 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 no.
I'm not asking that, I'm just saying who seconded it.
I second the...
No, you made the motion.
I made the motion to appoint Commissioner Inkledon for the roll call. Someone second.
Mr. Laurie?
I voted aye for Commissioner Inkledon.
Mr. Raven?
Yeah, aye, Frankledon.
Aye.
And I'll say no for the obvious reasons.
No.
Okay. Motion carries.
Motion carries. Commissioner Inkledon is the man.
There you go. Now, if I was a betting man, I would have took that bet. Now, what else do we have on the agenda tonight? Opportunity for public to address the board. Oh, no, Chief, I missed you over there. Chief, do you have anything to add to this lovely conversation?
The only thing I'll say is the workers' comp claim. Sometimes we do touch base with the attorneys, so am I restricted from speaking to them on, not workers' comp, but 207A on the job injuries? So now I have to bring that to the board, and then you guys will contact counsel on questions regarding...
I would bring that right to Mr. Inkledon, and I would have Jamie contact Mr. Inkledon as well. He can handle all those.
Okay.
I think he'll do a fine job.
As long as he communicates them all to the board when he gets them.
I think he'll do a fine job, Chief.
Yep. That's, I think it's wonderful. Any public comment? Come on up. Yeah, you're welcome to come up.
Good evening. All right, Michael Downing, 72 Stevens Avenue.
And I should say first, this is an unusual meeting tonight. You're probably, I don't know if I've seen you here before, but our meetings are usually not this lively or spirited, so you picked a good night to come to get in some entertainment.
Very good. My question is in reference to fire hydrant fees that have been pushed on to municipal fees on water bills for properties I manage in Bronxville and Tuckahoe, but my home in Eastchester. I don't have the municipal part on that. And it's my understanding that the fire district is in a lawsuit with the town over said...
We're not in the law, we're defendants. In other words, I'll explain that a little bit. Somewhere around 2014, the New York State Public Service Commission, they changed how hydrants get charged. And if you're familiar with the New Rochelle Water Authority, or we call now Suez Water, I have a summer home, and I paid the water bill today. It was $100 for three months. My water bill here is, I don't know, $100 a month or something stupid, and I don't have any real land. And the hydrants here are about $1,200 a month per hydrant. So the municipalities of Bronxville and Tuckahoe decided with the New York State Public Service Commission, they would transfer that billing to the homeowners and all water users, not just taxpayers. So the churches and the not-for-profits would all have to pay, not just the exempt properties. So the Village of Bronxville and Village of Tuckahoe both agreed to do that. The town of Eastchester, which represents just the east, we call it the town outside the two villages, right? The town outside, or Eastchester, Eastchester, as Mr. Moses used to call it. Eastchester, Eastchester decided not to do that. We, going back, we don't know when, maybe 100 years or whatever, we don't know when, there was some agreement that we would reimburse Tuckahoe and Bronxville and Eastchester something in the neighborhood of 30% each for the hydrant bill. So Bronxville used to get a hydrant bill of $200,000 a year. We would reimburse $60,000. Eastchester would get a $400,000 bill. We would reimburse $130,000. And Tuckahoe, years ago, used to be a bonus, and they stopped about five years ago billing us, and they used to do the same thing. So when, started showing up on our personal water bills, if you lived in Bronxville or Tuckahoe, you started getting a municipal surcharge. That municipal surcharge is the homeowner paying for the hydrants. So the municipality's not paying for the hydrants. So Bronxville and Tuckahoe stopped paying for their hydrants. Eastchester, Tony Calavita and the town board never took advantage, if you want to call it that, of the Public Service Commission availability to bill the homeowners. They chose to get the bill to the town, and they would send us the bill. Well, we couldn't pay the bill, we felt, because our tax money comes from Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe. If we paid that bill to the town, we would be taking Bronxville and Eastchester money and paying Eastchester, Eastchester its hydrant bill. So that number is up to about $400,000 now, which the town of Eastchester thinks we own. They initiated a lawsuit. There's two kinds of lawsuits in this world. There's Article 78s, which are special proceedings, and there's a straight old regular...
There's multiple types.
Multiple types.
There's two types you're talking about in municipal law.
Right. So in municipal law, they hit us with a general lawsuit, which is a regular, it's not a special process lawsuit or an Article 78. It's a special procedure suit. It's more expensive to go down this route. They went the more expensive route, and they sued us, and they're demanding we continue to pay the village, the town of Eastchester, the hydrant fee. So they're suing us for, it's about $130 a year. It's been on for about three years now, so we're up to about $390,000. We're incurring legal bills to defend us against our own taxpayers. So the fire district is hiring a law firm to defend itself against its own taxpayers. The town board decided to do this vote in February 2000, bring this lawsuit in February 2016. When we challenged the lawsuit in court, we said, you know, you guys never voted on this. You had to have a board vote to do this. Well, Tony Calavita didn't have a vote. He just decided to sue us. So...
The board.
The board. The board decided to sue us. But the board never had a meeting decide to sue us on record. So the board held a meeting on a Friday night, very similar to this meeting, a special meeting, short notice, on a Friday night and a Friday in June, they had a meeting, which the only topic of the agenda was sue the Eastchester Fire District. So they unanimously passed that. Glenn Bolito, fortunately, who lives in Bronxville, didn't sue his own residents. But they brought that lawsuit to sue us, and we've been defending that lawsuit for a year and a half now. And it, my guess, is in the appellate division.
The people of Eastchester, Tuckahoe, and Bronxville are paying two sets of lawyers. They're paying the town lawyers and the fire district lawyers over this lawsuit to sue each other.
Sue each other, yeah. The town board of Eastchester is suing their own taxpayers, the us, the, you know, basically the same residents. So you'd have the residents over here suing the residents over here, all the same people.
And you say it's $1,200 a year per hydrant?
$1,200 a year per hydrant. And so it comes out there, I bet the town of Eastchester is paying $400,000 a year in hydrants.
Now, is there a count on hydrants?
Oh, yeah, we know exactly how many hydrants there are in Eastchester. Yeah.
And then do we not pay for hydrants that are out of service?
Well, we, the amount of hydrants that are over service are very small. That's the minimus to the big picture here.
I agree, but it's just another part of the puzzle.
Yeah, what's more interesting part of the puzzle, I think, the town of Eastchester has two budgets. They have the town outside and then the town and the two villages. Who is paying, if you can get the answer to this, I appreciate it, who is paying for the lawsuit? Is it everybody? Tuckahoe, Bronxville, Eastchester paying? Eastchester's bill for that lawsuit? Because just think about it. If Eastchester wins, Bronxville and Tuckahoe will be paying money that'll show up basically to benefit only the people in Eastchester. Eastchester. And so I don't know what budget they're billing out of. I would like to see the lawsuit go away. And, you know, whoever can get that lawsuit to go away, that would be a wonderful thing. It's bizarre to me. It's an extravagant use of taxpayer funds to sue your own taxpayers. What can I say? All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Now that we're on hydrants, I just want to say something. Chief, there's no way that we could enforce any of these residents, because at the corner of Douglas and Howard, they had all their recyclables piled right against the hydrant. And I saw a house, there's a hydrant in front of the person's house on Oakland Avenue. They had all their trash piled right on top of the hydrant on trash day. And God forbid, if our men go out, they first have to clear the hydrant area to get to make a connection, and there's the fire hydrant on the top of Wallace Street, the weeds are overgrown, the hydrant. It's a shame, like I says, God forbid, if somebody's house, like on the corner of Howard and Douglas and on Oakland, where I saw it last week when it was trash day and recyclable day on Tuesday, I think it was, and this stuff is all piled on top of the hydrant. Is there no way that we could enforce it or make the captain ring the doorbell and tell him to move their stuff away from the hydrants?
Off the top of my head, I don't have the correct answer to that. I will contact Captain Pinneval in fire prevention and find out the exact answer.
Please. Because something drastically is going to happen someday on trash day and recyclable day, where you guys are going to have to connect. What's the matter?
It's kind of late. We've been here a long time.
Oh, when you're talking, it wasn't late? When you were talking, it wasn't late. Now I'm talking, it's late. I'm just trying to get an answer or help. You're worrying about the citizens of the town?
No, I'm worried to borrow my clothes.
Well, I'm not worried about a bar of clothes. You're told that this is the place where you could hold a crowd. I'm just trying to get an answer, and I'm cut off. Anyway, Chief, anyway, Chief, I just hope...
I think that's what I've heard in the past.
I don't think it's ours.
That's why I said I have to double check.
Yeah, I just hope that we never have an alarm where you got to hook up to one of these hydrants where everything is piled on. Then again, Dennis, here you go. You got the meeting.
Okay. Our next meeting, anybody else like to talk, address the board?
You better hurry up, because he's going to cut you off.
Last call.
I was wondering what the status of the secretary going forward?
Mr. Inkledon can answer that.
We still haven't made a decision, unfortunately, but when we do, we'll certainly let all the applicants know. And if they've been eliminated, we will let them know. And it's just, we hope to resolve it in the next, within the next month.
So is it that first you're supposed to hire somebody in district? I mean, unless you can't find someone.
Correct.
Yes.
For certain positions, that's possible.
Yes, yes, it's for two, yes, for treasurer and secretary. Both of those positions, technically, you're supposed to hire in town first. If you can find, if you can't find anybody, you can go outside of town.
We didn't do that previously, but this time we are.
Right, going, right, going.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Our next meeting will be September 11th in the Village of Tuckahoe. And I would reach out if we can get Paul. Would you like to open that meeting? Are you going to be around September 11th? Well, if you're working, you can still take off and be here. The chief will give you special dispensation for this. Can you give him dispensation if he's working?
Yeah.
He can come when he's open. He'll have a portable.
He's off. Okay. So if, I would like, I think we should rather have you speak at the end of the meeting. You generally come at the meeting. I think it would be better if you spoke at the beginning of the meeting rather than the end.
Isn't there a ceremony in the morning?
Ceremony's in the morning at Town Hall. The town supervisor runs a ceremony at Town Hall on September 11th at 8:45, I believe. 8:45?
I think that's when it starts.
Yeah, but we're going to run our, we're going to have our board meeting in Tuckahoe that night, September 11th. It's a Monday night. And Paul Ratalone does a particular, Lieutenant Ratalone does a particularly good recap of his time down on 9/11 and his days afterwards. So it's always very moving. That said, I, motion to close the meeting? Whoa, 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 whoa.
Tom Cusack, Vice President of Local 916. There was one agenda item that hasn't been addressed regarding the assistant chiefs or captain's position.
Well, we've discussed that at length, and we can't give you anything right here as in our discussion, but we've made progress in our discussion to formulate an idea that we would maybe, you know, we're thinking about it, and we spent an hour discussing it. So we're formulating some train of thought, and we'll communicate it somehow to you guys. Is that fair?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion we close the minute, the meeting in honor of the nine sailors we lost last week.
Sure. Second, since you made a motion.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Aye.
131. 131.